Good evening, I will call this meeting to order. If you would kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Carmody? Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Regan?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Morone?
Here. And Counselor Carmody just walked in the room. On the consent agenda, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve items 3A through 3O.
Second.
Motion being second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. There were no items removed. Public question and answer. Does anyone have a question for the council? Mr. Cumberford.
Bill Cumberford, Broadview Drive. I was here probably five or six months ago, and I asked the mayor about the sidewalk policy. We have any update with that?
No.
Okay. Can we get that put on Old Business, Chairman?
So you want the sidewalk policy put on Old Business? From what perspective, I guess?
I've been waiting probably five or six months for an answer.
But I'm not sure what the question is.
What is the policy for the sidewalk inspector? And I'd like to see what the written policy is to understand it because... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So the council didn't fund a sidewalk inspector as a part of the budget?
No, but we have a town engineer that's responsible to inspect the department, to inspect the sidewalks. I want to know what the policy is.
So Old Business would infer that it's the business of this council, right? So I guess if the council had a desire to put it on, we could put it on, but there really isn't anything to talk about at this point. There is no sidewalk inspector, right? And there's no plans in the coming fiscal year to have one. So just help me out with where you're going with that. I'm not sure what we would talk about.
Based upon the town charter, it states that the... Actually, the way the charter is written, it falls under Public Works. But for whatever reason, it got sidetracked, and it's not supposed to because if you follow the charter, it says it's engineer... Excuse me, it's Public Works. So somehow, the engineering department got the duty to inspect the sidewalks. So I filed a complaint two and a half years ago. It's never been addressed. So they want things pinpointed down. So I said, "What is the parameters? Is it a quarter of an inch? Is it three-eighths of an inch? Is it a half an inch? What is it so I know?" And I said, "As a matter of fact, there's more in my neighborhood." So I wanted to know why you're there. They said, "Well, you have to be specific." So I asked for specificity as far as what the parameters are, and I'm still looking for that. But nothing exists. I've been waiting five, six months to get an answer. That's what I want to know.
Okay. So I'm happy to reach out to the town engineer and see if I can give you some specifics on what is a safe sidewalk. I'm sure there's a guideline somewhere.
Sure. And I'd be happy to give you all my emails for the past two and a half years about it. Okay? So you can have that too. Because I've been waiting for the answer. I've been coming here for eight months trying to get the answer. So shifting gears, to the mayor through the chair. I don't know if anybody's aware, but the Classic Turf is the same organization that was, for whatever reason, I don't know, awarded the post-tension concrete work down at Community Lake. It's the same people that had the contract for Doolittle Park. Four hundred something thousand. Who inspects the work there, Mayor? On behalf of the town?
It varies depending upon the stage of construction.
So is it the town engineer goes down and inspects it on behalf of the town, or do we have a third party?
Again, it varies depending upon the stage of construction. There's times when the rec director is there. There's times when Public Works is there. It varies.
Okay, so they've inspected the project throughout the stages of progress?
To my knowledge, they have.
Okay, so another thing, and finally, I had reached out to you because I couldn't get an answer from the engineering department about tendons. I asked for months if which projects, as far as the post-tension concrete, required encapsulated tendons and which ones weren't. I never got any response. I didn't want to go down the Freedom of Information complaint. So I said to the mayor, and your response, Mayor, was that you have no documents responsive to my request. It wasn't documents. It was an answer to a question, meaning, was Doolittle supposed to get encapsulated ones? Was Pragnum supposed to get encapsulated ones? Were none of them supposed to be encapsulated? I was looking for definitive answers as to which ones were and which ones weren't, or they all were supposed to get them.
I have no personal knowledge that would answer that question.
And I asked the engineer, and to date, I have no answer whatsoever. I'm... Which ends with this? I went down there. Am I done?
That's your three minutes.
Do I... Can I do my final piece or no?
Well, the council rules are three minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Cumberford, but that's...
Okay, thank you. Oh, and by the way, one thing. Mayor Savoni is gracious enough to meet me down at West Side Field tomorrow at nine o'clock. All you guys are invited, and thank you, Mayor, for showing up.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with a question for the council? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Old Business, Janice, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
Yes, I have a package going out to the property owners where we need an easement with information, draft easements, maps, that's going out this week to those people. And I'm looking to set up individual meetings with them.
Perfect, thank you very much. Moving on to number seven. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding a Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the Wallingford Board of Education and the Wallingford Para-Educators Union from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Good evening. If you could kindly introduce yourselves for the record.
Sure. Danielle... Sorry. Danielle Villasie, Superintendent.
Fran Thompson, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel.
Dominic Burrow, Business Manager.
Perfect. What have you for us this evening?
So thank you all very much for this opportunity. We have two items for your consideration. We have negotiated contracts with two bargaining units within the Wallingford Public Schools, and we want to make you aware of both for your consideration. The first is with the Para-educators, one of our largest groups at 193 members. This is a three-year contract that is retroactive from the beginning of the last school year that just concluded. And the salaries, wages that were negotiated include a general wage increase of 1% for those Para-educators that were not at the top step of our contract. So along with the step, a 1% general wage increase. And for those at top step, a 2.5% general wage increase for those folks. We also are pleased in negotiating the health insurance that we were able to negotiate, and the union agreed to the prescription plan edits that the town employees also have. So all four edits there, we were pleased about that. And in addition to that, we had some language that was better defined, what our paid sick leave was and our workers' compensation length of time for employees who are out on workers' comp. So we were pleased with that. And I want to thank the Board of Education members, Mr. Votto and Mrs. Reynes, who were part of that negotiation session.
Thank you. Questions for the Board of Education? Okay, seeing none. Just to remind the public, so the only action the council could take would be to reject the contract, so we would have a vote to reject. If we don't take a vote, that means that the contract will pass once the 30-day period has expired. All right, moving on to item eight. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the Wallingford Custodians?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So in addition to, again, Mrs. Reynes and Mr. Votto, Mr. Doring was also part of this negotiation committee. We have a 38-member unit in our custodian and maintenance unit. It is a three-year contract. And again, also includes step movement. The first, and for all three years, with a general wage increase as well for the first and third year. This is retroactive as well from this past school year. And similarly, we negotiated some deductible increases in the third year, and also some work with our prescription plan edits and our direct deposit information, you know, and participation. And expanded the definition of immediate family for sick leave in accordance with our other unions.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this item? Seeing none? Any comments from the public? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening. Moving on to number nine.
Mr. Chairman?
Please. Yes, please.
I move that we approve the new Assistant Superintendent of Wastewater Pumping Stations and Collections Systems job description.
Second.
All right, motions made and seconded. Good evening, gentlemen. Can you introduce yourselves for the records, please? I'm sorry, Jim, we're not getting you on the mic.
Jim, Town HR Director.
Thank you.
Neil Anwick, General Manager for the Water and Sewer Divisions.
Thank you. And...
We're here tonight to seek your approval on two new job descriptions and three revised job descriptions for the Water and Sewer Divisions. The first one, the Assistant Superintendent of Wastewater Pumping Stations and Collection Systems, is a new job class, pay grade seven in the management union. It's essentially, we're splitting... The proposal is to split the current Assistant Superintendent of Sewer into two separate classifications. The current position will be for water treatment, and this new position is for the collection system. We recommend the approval of the new job description as well as the revision of the current one.
Okay. Questions on this item? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. Jim, and I think I've asked you this before. Did you have a lawyer look at this job description and the other ones?
No.
Is there a reason why?
Well, I take that back. It was a lawyer, Mayor Savoni.
Okay.
He's part of the review process. So Neil and I meet with him. We review... That's the charter requirement. Neil is the subject matter expert and would defer to him on any technical questions.
I appreciate that. And I try to stay away from the technical areas because I do appreciate Neil's expertise in this area. But, you know, and I think you're going to see a similar situation with each of the documents that are before us. But starting with the one that's presently, I'm looking at the area. It's on the second page. It's only a three-page document. No, it's a two-page document. Required knowledge, skills, and abilities, right? So we're not necessarily talking about expertise because it's very broad. And throughout this paragraph, there are various adjectives. So it seems like we use the adju... We say somebody needs something that's considerable. Somebody needs something that's good. And something that has no modifier. So the first one is considerable knowledge of principles, technology, equipment, processes, and practices of operating and maintaining wastewater pumping stations. So how is one to establish that? What's the bar? What's the line?
So the knowledge, skills, and abilities are, you know, they're... Job descriptions are meant to be descriptive in nature. They're not meant to be restrictive. And so it's a general statement of duties. And what are the level and kind of knowledge, skills, and abilities that are necessary to perform the task associated with the position? Considerable would be in the moderate level in terms of knowledge, skills, and abilities. It would be someone who can perform that task with minimal supervision. Obviously, there's a superintendent who's above that position that can overrule them. But that modifier, that adjective, if you will, is to be descriptive of what Neil would be expecting that position to be able to perform at a certain moderate level of difficulty.
I appreciate that. But you didn't say moderate knowledge. You said considerable knowledge. And when I go and look it up, what does considerable mean? There's a large amount extent or degree. It's not moderate, right? So right here, as we have this discussion, I think we have a difference, right? Because the definition of considerable is not moderate. It is something more than moderate. We talk about also in this paragraph, ability, right? The very next... It's two sentences down. "There is no modifier for ability to troubleshoot a variety of water treatment and pumping station equipment, as well as vehicles and construction equipment." But then down below, we chose to add a modifier to ability and say, "good ability." So I don't know if adding the modifier, "good ability", makes it more than ability or less than ability, right? Because it's not excellent ability. It's not considerable ability, right? So why do we choose to use "good ability" in that sentence but not "good ability" up above? This is what I'm looking at, and this is the things that jump out to like me as a lawyer. So, you know, another example is we have "good knowledge of public administration principles and practices as applied to the sewer division." I have no idea what that means. That could mean that, okay, I know there's a town council, and they have something to do with the PUC. That's good ability, right? But you chose to add the modifier, "good knowledge," right? Instead of just knowledge. So when you say that the intent is not to be restrictive, I think you are restricting. You're saying considerable knowledge, you know, in one area. You're saying good knowledge in another area without qualify. We're hearing that considerable is moderate. So I don't know how anybody can unpack this paragraph. You know, the rest of it, I'm okay because a lot of it is technical. But, you know, employers get sued based upon not hiring someone. And, you know, you could say, "Well, you didn't have considerable knowledge, and that's subjective, and that was my determination." And the personnel person is saying, "Well, considerable knowledge is moderate." It's not... What I think of considerable is substantial, right? Well, that's what I think of when I say considerable, so...
So I think I said this the last time. We've had this discussion before. And we will look at the minimum qualifications in terms of determining who's eligible to sit for the examination. And then, once we have a list of, you know, a list of eligible candidates, that gets sent to the appointing authority. He picks the preferred candidate. And then these dimensions, if you will, these knowledge, skills, and abilities will be evaluated by the department during the probationary period. So I understand what you're saying, but we would look to... And I think the legal test is the minimum qualifications for the position.
So you're saying that we hire people at the water division and then determine during their probationary period whether they have considerable knowledge of principles, technology, equipment, so on and so forth?
No. No, what I'm saying is...
Yeah, I would think that you've got to analyze that before you hire them.
Correct. But this is going to be the standard in which Neil is going to be evaluating them during the probationary period. He's the technical expert, and I'll defer to him on that. But the minimum qualifications, that is the standard that applications are screened against.
So... I mean, I guess it begs the question, then, why use the modifiers? If you took all the modifiers out and just said that somebody needs the knowledge of the principles, technology, equipment, processes, and practices, and then Neil determines after the person is during, you know, their probation period, "Well, you didn't have enough", then he makes that determination, right? But we're throwing right at the beginning considerable.
So there are classification systems that represent just what you said. This is a... You know, the classification plan here in the town of Wallingford was here before I started working here. And these modifiers have been in the job descriptions preceding my 22 and a half years here.
I appreciate that. But what's before us is to re-codify perhaps with somebody, some mistake that was made 25 years ago. So, you know, I'll... We'll go on to the other ones. But those are my comments. And there's more egregious ones as we go on, so... But thank you.
Any other questions on this item? So, and you know, Craig, I'm sensitive to what you're saying, but this is not... This is a job description and not a contract, right? So you said you approach it as a lawyer, which I think is your expertise, right? So as a hiring manager, I look at this, and I'm like, "Well, this is what I would expect a candidate to have as an applicant," right? So I don't think that... You know, there's always generalizations. And a job application... A job description is going to codify like 30% of what we expect a person to do, right? Because the rest of it is sort of like the things you do when you get to the job. So I don't really have an issue with these terms because I think it's all in a job interview. It's all... Like, the test is the test, but any job interview is always subjective based on what the hiring manager thinks is going to be appropriate for that position.
So can I just...
Please.
So how does a contract come to be? There's an offer, and there's acceptance, right? That is contract, right? So this is our offer. We have an opening at the water division. We are offering to hire someone if you meet these qualifications. And then somebody comes to the table, and they say, "Yeah, I meet those qualifications. I am going to accept your offer." That becomes the contract. So this is a portion of a contract.
So I would disagree with that because I think the description... The job description is just a general description of what's expected for an applicant, right? So when the applicant asks to be employed, and you interview them, and you make an offer of acceptance, that's where the contract begins. And that's the offer of employment, where we actually say, "We're going to hire you for this job," right? So to me, that's the contract part. This is just a general description of what it is that we expect the person coming in the door to have.
I totally disagree. I mean, I've...
I mean, you're a lawyer, I'm not. But this is sort of... As someone that, you know, that interviews and hires people, like, this system... This feels normal to me.
I just had a hearing before the Labor Board, and we analyzed what the person, what their job description was at the time that the offer was made. I mean, that is what was relied upon. So I totally disagree. But anyway.
Understood. Good discussion, though. Anyone else on this topic? Counselor Regan? Oh, sir, we'll... Give us one second. Once the council's done, then we'll go to the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess just a couple of questions for clarification. Are we currently using an applicant-tracking system that does grading of the resumes that we get in or the applications that come in?
We have an applicant-tracking system, but we do not use it to screen applications.
And from a hiring manager perspective, I guess, Neil, the question would be, are you the sole authority whether we go or no-go on an individual if it goes to an offer? Are you the one that's gauging, I guess in other instances, are you the one that's gauging if an individual has considerable knowledge based on your reference, yourself personally, having a certain subset of knowledge for that job description?
So eventually, I am... So I am the appointing authority for the Water and Sewer Division. So the division... So the decision does come down to me. But at that table is one to three other interview staff who do interview the candidates with me, so...
Who have extensive knowledge.
Correct. So, you know, in this case, we would look at the sewer division superintendent. We may look at the other assistant superintendent, the incumbent. We may look at a chief operator. We may look at the electrical technician. You know, subject matter experts who can then provide more of the technical aspect of it.
Okay.
We have a very robust process that I've established after nine years here. You know, I get a list of five, up to a list of five from the Human Resources Department. We do a pre-screen. Then we interview. Then we do a post-discussion. And then we see where it goes.
Okay. Thank you on that. One other question, I guess in general, and this goes into the other job descriptions as well. Are the probationary periods defined anywhere? Is it in...
They're defined in the labor contracts, define the length of the probationary period.
Okay. But an applicant taking a look at this would not know what that probationary period would be?
For the Water and Sewer Divisions, they would. I have what I call a pre-interview. So I reach out individually myself to each candidate that we want to talk to further, go through the roles and the responsibilities of the position as well as the wages and benefits. So salary, healthcare, vacation, as well as the probationary period for each position.
And I guess some of those are variable. Some may be six months, some may be 12 or 24, even if it depends on advanced-level certifications.
No, it is six months for the Teamsters Local 443 right now. The Sewer Division Operations Staff for the water unit as well as the management unit is 12 months.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? All right, moving to the public, sir. If you could just identify your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Scott Lenzel. I live on Ridgecrest Road. My question would be to the gentleman is, why aren't we soliciting people with licenses? S2 license, OE2 license. Why aren't we soliciting these kind of people as candidates to come into the plant and work? Then we don't have to have such a long, drawn-out contract. A little bit of this, a little bit of that.
I'm sorry, sir, they're not picking up on the microphone. If you'd just speak into the microphone.
Did you guys hear me at all?
Yeah. Continue.
That's my question. Why ain't we soliciting candidates with the proper licensing for these positions? And then we can cut down on the job description itself.
Well, for the Assistant Superintendent position of wastewater treatment, a Class III license or certification from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection is required.
State?
Correct.
I don't know. Just from what you're saying... I worked in a power plant 32 years. From what you're saying, you need somebody with an OE2 license or an S2 license, something like that. Somebody that knows the difference between pump seal and pump packing, you know? That's just my suggestion. I don't understand why we're not soliciting people with these state licenses. I know how hard they are to get and how informed you have to be to have it.
So the different licenses and certifications are included in the job requirements as an entry to be qualified for the position? And that license or certification is based on each specific job?
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other questions on this topic? All right, we'll take a voice vote. All right, we'll take a voice vote. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Um, clerk, uh, note that Counselor Fishbein voted no. Moving on to number ten.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow, I'd like to actually motion to accept the job descriptions for ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, all in one motion. Are we to entertain that? I move that we approve the new engineer two job description, the revisions to the job description for junior engineer, that we approve the revisions to the job description for water and wastewater engineer planner, and that we improve the revisions to the job description for assistant superintendent for the sewer division.
Second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Questions on these descriptions? Counselor Fishbein?
I do thank, uh, Counselor Laffin for the joined, uh, motion. It just makes this easier. Uh, looking at the one for the engineer two, what's more important, Neil? Somebody using AutoCAD in that role, or dealing with the general public?
I think it's both. I- I think it's-
They're equal?
You need to have AutoCAD, you need to have the design skills, and then you also need to be able to communicate and coordinate that with both other staff, vendors, contractors, as well as the general public.
Okay.
I think, I think it's very important, and I will say this, that you can come in with the technical skills, but those engineers who advance, and in my opinion are better engineers, are the ones that can speak. The ones that can communicate all the way from a construction labor up to a senior executive.
Okay. So- so they're equal?
I think so.
Okay. So, in the knowledge and skills and abilities section, it desires considerable ability to deal with the general public, but only good ability to deal with Autodesk, AutoCAD, Microsoft Word, so on and so forth. I don't, I still can't tell whether good is better than considerable. I- I would think that it's less. But why are they different qualifications, if you're telling me they're equal? One is good and one is considerable, right?
Well, from my perspective right now, um, most of the candidates who would be, we, who would be applying for this position come in with AutoCAD experience. That's the standard for engineers in this generation right now. But your ability to talk and communicate and relay that information. We are a small engineering section. You can't hide in your cubicle and just do design work. You need to be, get out there and explain it, and manage.
Okay. So you would find it to be acceptable, somebody who was in effect learning on the job the AutoCAD aspect, but had the people's skills inherently?
Correct. And I think we do some of our projects in-house. We design them in-house. Some of the other projects, we hire an engineering consultant. You need to then be able to manage that engineering consultant. You're not on the boards, you're not on the table, as they say, and those are old-school drafting terms. But you need to know design, but you don't need to know how to put the line on the computer screen.
Okay. I'm just reading what's before us.
Yep.
And obviously, they were treated differently. Um, in the... I think it's the one... It's the project engineer planner. Once again, same section. Somebody chose in the second sentence to materially change, the old language said "some knowledge of", and that wasn't pulled over. Somebody changed that to "good knowledge of", and why is that? I don't know if they're different. I don't know if they're more, I don't know if they're less, but it was, it was a conscious decision by someone.
I, could you point out where you're looking again?
Sure. It's under required knowledge or skill, knowledge, skills, and a- abilities. Uh, it's the second sentence is removed, I think, in its entirety. Yes.
Okay.
And it's replaced. So somebody, the- the old language said "some knowledge of", and the new language says "good knowledge of", so why did we make that conscious change?
Because as a project engineer planner, you should have eight years of experience. Your AutoCAD experience and your hydraulic modeling experience should be more developed and more refined than somebody who's, say, at the engineer two level with only six years of experience. So that was specifically chosen to differentiate between engineer two and the next step up, which is a project engineer planner.
So where does it say a- about those years that you were just referring to?
Under minimum qualifications.
Okay. So that's, that's a below section.
Correct.
So, how do we put that together with the- the language up above that I was, I was talking about? So s- some knowledge, is that defined somewhere? I mean, I- I would think that's a very general term. And now you're tying that to a number of years. I'm just trying to put that together. So, somebody obviously made this change, thinking that some knowledge was not sufficient, and changed it to good knowledge, and now you're telling us that that means a certain number of years. And I'm just trying to put that together. Where- where is that defined?
So, I can't speak to that, but I can say this, that if you look at the word "some" and "good", if you wanna describe a- a level of, um, knowledge, a skill, or an ability, I think that you can, you can adequately describe it as a good, you know, a- a good level. "Some" doesn't just describe it a- as accurately as it should be. A- and that's old language. I can't even tell you when this job description was last revised. It was probably back in the nineties.
No, it actually was revised May fourteenth, two thousand and two.
Okay. So, i- it goes back quite a few years. A- and it was a word that was replaced, because we felt that it was more accurately descriptive of what was required.
And maybe, maybe I'm reading this wrong. Um, was the "some" and the "good" in the original that was modified?
No. So the "some" is the old language, it's being stricken, and "good" is the new language being in- inserted.
Okay. So why is that not bold and underlined, like the rest of the, what I think is the new language? You recognize the difference, right?
It's bolded. "Good" is bolded and underlined.
It's not. Not on, not on our copy.
It's on mine.
Not on ours, so...
You would've got the one I sent out.
Looking at the same thing?
"Some" has a strike-through.
Yes. "Some" now, the- the sentence, "some knowledge of the principles and practices of economic analysis, operation of water and wastewater systems", that is, has a strike-through. But the next is not, the only portion that's underlined and bolded in our copy is "and of the principles and practices" in the next, in that next line. So, for whatever reason, we're looking at different copies. Um... Yeah, I still under- I mean, I... Because obviously, somebody made a conscious decision to, in the new language, in the next sentence, use the word "considerable". So, once again-
Can you confirm what job description you're looking at?
Yeah. It's the, um, project engineer planner.
Under required knowledge, skills, and abilities?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I see. Okay. Nope, he's up here. He's up here.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, we were in the wrong sentence. Okay.
Okay. So, should I ask again, that "good knowledge of this, of state, federal, and local regulations" was existing language?
Correct.
Okay. Um... Okay. And that's the drawdown. Okay. Um, the next is in the assistant superintendent of wastewater treatment. And- and it's once again another, you know, I highlighted the line that the individual ha- should have considerable ability and aptitude to understand and convey complex oral and written instructions. But then I contrast that with the last sentence, which appears to be new language. Or it's at least bolded. It's not underlined. Where this person who can convey complex oral and written instructions only needs good ability to learn and apply new skills. So why would we treat those two differently? I would think that the- the ability would come along, but you lowered the requirement, right? At least the way I'm reading it.
So this is a supervisory position. So most important is to relay instructions, directions, and daily tasks to the crews and to the staff. So that is why the emphasis is placed on your communication skills.
Oh, no, I got it, but then-
Okay. But the good abil- so the good ability to learn and adapt, again, as a senior position in the sewer division, you should already have that ability, so that delta, or that, you know, you're ready at ninety-five percent. So to get to a hundred percent is less. That's how I view it. You're, you already have a high ability to learn new skills, knowledge, and technology. So it just takes a little more to get there.
I totally agree with you, but that individual who has that intuition, or that learned acumen, already has, I would think, in your eyes, considerable ability. But that's not what you wrote. Right? You wrote "considerability and aptitude to understand and convey complex oral and written instructions", but you didn't have the same requirement for the last one. Which you, I mean, you're agree- that's exactly what I was thinking. The- the person who has this ability in the upper, on the complex, is more than likely gonna be able to apply and adapt and all that stuff. But you only required good ability. And that's, those are the questions that, you know, why did somebody write it this way? So, I- I, I mean, I would've said considerable, because they run in line, I think, right? So, anyway. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this topic? All right, going to the public. All right. Um, uh, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Maron?
I vote yes, and the motion passes. Uh, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to number fourteen. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to CAC or General Statute, Section two-two-five-F, one-two-hundred-six-E, one-two-ten-ten, related to public official liability.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in fa- in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session.
I will call this meeting back to order. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstent, we are now in regular session. Seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.